Good afternoon, everyone. This is the Civil Service Commission. My name is Dottie Loftstrom. Today is Wednesday, September 10th, 2025, and it's 2:30, and I call this meeting to order. Jennifer, you are—no, you're not first. The—okay, I'm all mixed up because it didn't say roll call yet. Okay, so—
Not yet.
Jennifer, yes.
I'm sorry. I needed clearly one more minute. All right, so we are very proud to introduce to the Commission and all of those in attendance, our new Commissioner—Civil Service Commissioner, who was appointed by District for Amber Butler. So, welcome, and thank you very much for your service. We appreciate it. I think now we can move to roll call.
I'm just going to ask if you would like to introduce yourself. Tell us a little bit about yourself.
I'm Amber Butler. I am a Development Director for Catholic Charities, and I'm a real estate agent as well. I've been in the nonprofit sector for over the last 16 years in San Joaquin County, raising money for the most vulnerable within our community.
Thank you. Welcome. Okay, we'll move on to roll call. Commissioner Loftstrom.
Here.
Commissioner Lee.
Here.
Commissioner Butler.
Here.
And Commissioner Rulipon.
Yes.
Thank you. And then moving straight into public comment, we don't have any online comment. Is there anyone here today that would like to make public comments? There is not. No public comment. Thank you.
Thank you. So, we're on to the minutes. If everyone has read them, we can move to approval, or do you have any comments or suggestions?
No.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to—
I can—I can make a motion to approve the meeting, the last meeting. A second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. No opposed. The minutes are approved as written. With that, we have a fairly extensive report of disciplinary actions. Ms. Goodman, if you want to take us through that.
Certainly, thank you. So, for this meeting, we have several reports of disciplinary action, including order of termination for behavioral health services. Three, actually, incumbents who were terminated. One has appealed to arbitration, and two have not appealed. An order for reduction in salary at San Joaquin General Hospital with no appeal. An order of termination for San Joaquin General Hospital with no appeal. Order of reduction in salary for San Joaquin Health Centers, no appeal. And actually, there's a second one who's also a reduction in salary for San Joaquin Health Center. That one has been appealed to the Civil Service Commission. So, the team will work with counsel and the representatives to find an appropriate date for—to hear that disciplinary hearing. Order of termination for San Joaquin Health Centers, no appeal. Order of suspension at the Sheriff's Office, no appeal. And an order of demotion at the Sheriff's Office, which has been appealed to arbitration.
Thank you for taking us through that. I'll entertain a motion to accept the report of disciplinary actions.
I'll make a motion to accept the disciplinary actions.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I can second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No one's opposed, therefore, the report has been accepted. With that, we can move into our first classification project, the one regarding the Emergency Medical Services Agency.
Good afternoon, Chair Loftstrom, Commissioners. Amy Brimmer, Human Resources, Classification and Compensation. This is Classification Project 24-040, Emergency Medical Services Agency. The Emergency Medical Services Agency requested that HR conduct—consider combining two classifications, emergency medical services specialist and emergency medical services analyst, into a single classification series. We reviewed the classification specifications and determined that the classes have similar minimum qualifications, among other factors. We did gather information from data and information from subject matter experts and learned that separate classifications do limit the department's ability to assign staff to the various EMS programs, which also indicated hindering staff from expanding their EMS knowledge. To provide better continuity and flexibility in the distribution of work in this small division of 13 positions, and to allow for succession and growth, HR proposes the EMS Analyst Series be created. Those classifications are before you in your packets. We did provide the draft class specs to SEIU on July 30th and received no objections. We do have Jared Bagwell, Emergency Medical Services Administrator, available in person if you have questions.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone from the Commission want to ask a question? Okay. Little negotiation going on here. All right, so my question is just about the—I just wanted to confirm that I've got this right. So, the minimum qualification for the Analyst 1 is graduation from a four-year college, or you can substitute education up to two years. So, you can have two years of college plus two years' experience, or just a college degree. Is that—am I reading that right?
I'll get caught up with you on paper just to confirm.
I—I should have told you where I was.
I said—
Under minimum qualifications.
We're at the Level 1 Minimum Qualifications.
Yeah.
Yes, so on a year-for-year basis, you can either have the degree, or if you do not have the degree, then we can qualify you based on a year-for-year substitution, up to two years.
Okay. Okay, I just wanted to make sure I had that right, and it looks like I have the same question on the Analyst 2. Just going through that, because this one was definitely more complicated. So, for this one, it's like—I—I take it—you know, like the substitutions—I—I don't know. It's like an ideal, and then the substitution is maybe less than ideal, but maybe that's not what's meant. But the basic is two years—okay, so I'm on pattern 1 on the Analyst 2 under minimum qualifications. Again, I jumped in and forgot to say where I was. So, two years' experience as the Analyst 1, that makes sense. And then, so you can—you can have a graduation from an accredited college, plus you need the two years' experience, or you could have a master's degree, which—and then—and then, let's see, master's degree from Coastal Riverfield for the one year. So, you'd need the master's degree plus one-year experience. And then the last one is the bachelor's degree, and then with the two years' experience. Is that right? I've got it all written out. BS plus MS plus one year, or two—two years' college plus four years' experience. Is that the final one?
Correct. These—this is kind of what I—I very loosely and formally refer to as a double substitution. So, it's—you're right, it's substituting both—both ends of the equation. So, you can have additional education, need less experience. You can have less education and more experience. I'm not sure—I think that was just more of a general response, but there may be more detail that I'm not capturing in your question.
Okay, you said there's a representative here? Oh, great, great.
And—and this is the—the existing classification, and we—we did kind of preserve or attempt to preserve what was already there, to an extent that made sense in this day and age and enrolling in the new level. So, a lot of this is maintaining what was already in existence for the Emergency Medical Services Analyst class.
Hi, Chair Loftstrom, Commissioners. Jared Bagwell, EMS Agency Director. Part of the purpose of this class study was EMS is kind of a specialized field with a small pool, and we were having difficulty recruiting for the analyst position because of the educational and experience requirements. So, that was one of the objectives, was to kind of open up the educational and experience component, so that we weren't, you know, keeping people out of a small pool of—of candidates. Because, like I mentioned, EMS was kind of specialized, and you don't find people with this experience very often. So, when they do have experience, we—we wanted to substitute some of the education level. And in addition, the duties were so similar between specialists and analysts, we wanted a series to promote, you know, internal opportunities for advancement, because, you know, having a stable—you know, we're a smaller department of only 14 technically, because we have one opening. It was very beneficial for us to have some stability in some of that staffing. So, that was one of the objectives.
Okay, thank you. That—that helped, I was trying to—to work through that. I have one little typo. It's not—it's not truly an error, it's just from editing. And this one is for Analyst 1, under minimum qualifications. I was there, I just forgot that I had it. Okay? Okay, so it's—like I said, it's just a typo sort of thing.
Sure.
So, you've got education first, and then you have substitution, and it says additional, but you actually didn't mean to say additional, because you've already gotten rid of the experience. So, that's just a deletion of word.
Direct administrative experience in Emergency Medical Services. And then, we'll delete the word additional from substitution.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
And now I believe some other Commissioners have some comments.
Not sure which one of you want to answer this, but given that the emergency—the EMS Analyst 1 is pretty much classified as a learning position, are there any standards of measure to determine the two years' experience that they had acquired that experience necessary, given that the substitute is a master's degree? What—what rule of measure are we determining that in that two years, you learnt what you needed to learn to be an Analyst 2?
That's a really good question. Typically, measures of performance are articulated—I'm not sure if you've developed that yet or not—are articulated during the process. So, you're saying from going from a 1 to a 2?
Yes, in—in your—either pattern 1, it says experience, two years' experience as a EMS Analyst 1 in San Joaquin County. I don't know if it's possible—if we can have some verbiage in there determining what those two years need to entail.
We could come up with something. I think by virtue of doing the job for two years with satisfactory evaluations, you have earned the experience—the minimum experience—to promote to—the—to the Level 2. But we could have some objective, you know, criteria that would be expected of a—of a two-year career in the 1, that would have to demonstrate that they did that to move to a 2. Would that be something?
I—I don't—I don't actually agree with you on that one, because it's in San Joaquin County. If it was two years' experience—and this is just qualifying. If it's two years' experience in somewhere else, like in the second one, then I could see maybe detailing a little more, but since it—we already know what an EMS does in San Joaquin County, I don't quite see the need.
To rebut, I would have to say that my reason behind it is, is it's clearly listed that an Analyst 1, even in San Joaquin County, can be hired in the learning capacity, not necessarily in the experience capacity, correct? They have a basic experience, and then to learn that position. So, in the process of learning, being it defined, either remove the learning process from the Analyst 1, or define how you're going to evaluate your Analyst 2, to determine that they've learnt what they need to—to be in that position, to qualify for that position.
Okay, and I'm going to turn this over to our—our HR Director.
Thank you. So, Commissioner Lee, what I would say is that it is very standard in civil service in general, not just in San Joaquin County, but in all public service, to have opportunities for people that we consider our entry level, so that Analyst 1 is that entry-level position. And we try to make sure that our minimum qualifications are such that the people will have the basic knowledge, the skills, and the abilities to learn this role. And so, in our—in our kind of public service world, it's typical to see that learns to or becomes exposed to type of phrasing when we talk about our typical duties. And then, the 2 level is that journey level. So, the expectation is, during that two-year period, when you've been working—working with the department management, you're exposed, you learn, you have that base knowledge, and now you're able to perform more independently at that journey level. We do tend to keep the detail of those expectations outside of job specifications, because over time, those can shift, and so it—it can become problematic for us to come back to the Commission to have the—the—the really specific information detailed as of what would qualify you to go to the 2. But as our EMS Administrator mentioned, you know, the—the—the best practice, what we would expect to see as the department is laying out expectations of staff, evaluating, letting them know how they're doing, letting them know what they need to do to promote to that 2 level through the evaluation process, so that they are prepared when they're eligible from a time and position standpoint, to have those skills. So, that is a very standard thing, and I—I'll use the example of my own office. We have personnel analysts who come in with a—either a degree or experience, not unlike this one, and there are specific things, depending on their assignment, they have to learn and have to show proficiency at before they're eligible. And so, as they're evaluated, that 4, 7, and 11-month evaluation, those types of things are reviewed with them, so they understand how they're doing and what they need to do to be eligible to promote to the next level.
I—I think you—you actually answered the question to the wording is based on the evaluation of—well, what would be the position over that that would make that evaluation? Who—who would be the determining factor, or what position would be the determining factor of the two years' acceptance? Who—who makes that decision? And not to prolong the process—
No, no.
—I'm just trying to get an understanding.
Yeah, no, the two years is basically—you know, if somebody's been employed for a two-year period, and they have full-time service during that timeframe, they'll meet that time requirement, and then the department would then determine—you know, any promotion is always going to be based on a department manager's recommendation, assuming satisfactory performance, and a department's recommendation for promotion. So, currently, the way the—the classes are, the specialist is not able to promote to the analyst necessarily, and so this is now creating an—an entry and—and journey level 2. So, the department has asked us to create a method in which allows people to promote easier through the series.
And—and I'll refer back to the Chair, not just—I don't know how to say it, but I—I just—given that your pattern 2 experience and your substitute is equivalent to a master's degree, I just feel like there should be some kind of language in there, other than just you've held that Analyst 1 position for two years. I feel like there needs to be some kind of language in there to determine where you're going, okay, well, at least they were here for two years, or do you want this person with a master's? You know, that's a huge jump in any facet of business for me. Just my opinion.
Let's go back.
Sir, the man may comment quickly on the—the minimum qualifications, and probably goes without mention, but the—it—it is—the requirements are stacked upon the initial requirements. So, effectively, you will have someone at minimum—let's—let's kind of work through the written math here—a bachelor's degree plus two years' experience, or a cumulative four years' experience before they can promote to a 2. The master's degree being a substitution, they're already in existence. Eh, you know, but it's fine to be there. It's an option in which someone could come in from the outside, but our internal candidates, before they promote, will have a minimum a bachelor's degree and two years' applied experience at the one level, and then—or the minimum of four years' experience already in order to get to qualify as the 2, just within our internal requirements to qualify as a 2. So.
Yeah, it—it would be two years' college and two years' experience, just to—this is minimum and—minimum, just to become the Analyst 1, and then they've got the extra two years there. So, it's call it two years' college plus four years.
Gotcha.
So, you're good? Do you have any other questions, or?
No.
Okay.
You—well, actually, you answered—you asked the other question, so—
Okay.
—so I asked you to go first.
Good. Either of the other two Commissioners have a question? Okay. All of my questions are satisfied then, and all the other Commissioners. So, at this point, I'll entertain a motion to accept the Classification Project 24-040.
I'll make a motion for the Classification Project 24-040, Emergency Medical Services Agency.
Thank you. And I should have said as amended, because of the additional. So, do you want to remake that and add as amended?
As amended, yeah.
For me? Okay. And do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no, and the recommendation has passed. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming here in person. Next, we're going to go to—we're going to stick—stick with Amy and go on to the next classification project.
Thank you. This is Classification Project 24-034, regarding the Employment and Economic Development Department Analyst Series, commonly known as EEDD or E2D2. We enlisted the services of a third-party, usher-forward HR consulting, to study seven civil service positions in this EEDD Analyst Series. We have had—or Employment and Economic Development Department has had the entry and journey levels for the analyst since 1988, so the levels 1 and 2, and the advanced journey and supervisory levels since—well, the advanced journey slash supervisory level since 1998. So, that's the EEDD Analyst 3. These were to meet the department's analytical and administrative needs in support of its employment and training and economic development programs. The classification studies submitted by the Director of EEDD requested to reclassify the analysts. An incumbent study was conducted to evaluate if the positions were appropriately classified, and the study findings determined the current classification assignments to be appropriate. While the incumbents were not inappropriately classified, and therefore did not demand reclassification within the context of a civil service incumbent study, it did suggest the county could consider developing a broad analyst series for use across multiple departments. As of today, HR intends to conduct a comprehensive study of the multiple analyst classifications for opportunity to better facilitate equity across the county organization, and the findings of the study before you today just reinforce, from that third-party perspective, that this would be a valuable effort. We're asking that you adopt the recommendation today to maintain the five studied—or sorry, the five EEDD Analyst 1, 2 positions, and also maintain the two EEDD Analyst 3 positions as allocated. The final report and recommendation were shared with the study incumbents, EEDD leadership, and SEIU on July 17th, with the opportunity to provide feedback, and then once again on September 4th, to confirm the item had been rescheduled for today's meeting. We do have the Director of Employment and Economic Development, and the Deputy Directors online as well. And if you have any questions?
Okay, thank you, and I appreciate your—you're being online and ready to answer our questions. I bet you have questions.
Is it becoming a standard? No, it—I actually, I don't have any disagreement with the report or anything, I'm just—and I don't even know if it's pertinent to our vote, but I would love to hear from EEDD, or maybe one of you can just—you know, I know that they requested the report. I was wondering, maybe they saw something that isn't included in the report as to why they called for the report?
Amy, this is Patty. I could—I could respond.
Thank you, Patty.
Okay, so we—
Okay, so we, EEDD requested the report. This classification has been a series that was introduced many years ago, and we felt that it, is there an echo? I'm sorry.
No, you're okay.
Okay. Okay, so what we were wanting to, the county to look at was, was it, was this classification equitable with other analyst classifications throughout the county? We felt that because it is an EEDD-specific analyst position, it did not get the equity adjustments when the analyst series positions received raises. This particular position did not. So that's really what we were wanting to get evaluated. Were our analysts not being paid the way that the rest of the analysts throughout the county were getting paid? And that was the reason for us wanting the study to be done.
That makes a lot of sense. Are you satisfied with the response from, that Human Resources intends to look into this matter further?
Well, we are. We are, you know, hoping that they will look at a series throughout, you know, I'm okay with removing the EEDD from it and making it more of a classification that is equitable and could be used throughout the county. So if that's the recommendation, and it appears based on what was recommended by the consultant, that that's what they will be doing.
Okay, thank you. And do you want to provide us an update, Ms. Goodman?
Sure. I will just, you know, for our new commissioner, Ms. Bedler, I will just let you know that, you know, salary, which often, from a very understandable standpoint and classification often feel very connected, our Civil Service Commission does not have purview over salary. So that's something that our Board of Supervisors, and obviously, our, most of our employees are represented, and so it's something that it's a conversation the county administration has with our unions relating to salary. So the purpose of the study, when we do a classification study, is to determine, are they appropriately classified, these incumbents? And is the specification appropriate? And the result of this study was, yes, that's the case. It did identify, and as Ms. Bremer said, something this county has wanted to look at in the past. You know, in our county, we have 8,000 employees, we have about 1,000 classifications, and there are times through, you know, many years or decades of service, that things can, need to be better aligned within the county. And one of those are our administrative analyst positions. So we have some departments that have individual analyst series, such as EEDD. We also have Human Services Agency. There's also more general classes that are used for fiscal or programmatic type of analytical, analytical series. So there's opportunities certainly for the county to take a look at, and hopefully, we, you know, when we plan our work for a fiscal year, we always identify the requests, such as this one, that come from a department. And then we also identify studies that we would like to undertake, just because we know it's our best practice to look at specific things. So this is one that is high up on our wish list to get to, and we're hoping that in the spring, we're able to initiate a countywide look at some of these administrative analytical series.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve Classification Project 24-034.
I'll make a motion to accept Classification Project 24-034.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I can, second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say no, and the project has been accepted, and the motion has passed. Moving on to our next classification project.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Raquel Enong Steptoe, Classification Analyst. Today, I am presenting Classification Project 25-001 for San Joaquin General Hospital. San Joaquin General Hospital has requested that Human Resources revise the classification specification for the Assistant Clinical Laboratory Operations Manager, as it does not reflect the current scope of work. The definition, class characteristics, and typical duty sections were amended to reflect the current scope of work, which involve supervising daily operations at the clinical laboratory, exec, goodness, executing quality control programs, and ensuring compliance with federal and state regulatory requirements. Typical duties relating to the development and/or supervision of the laboratory information system have been removed. In addition, minor amendments were made to the minimum qualifications and physical and mental requirements to better align with current industry standards. Human Resources provided the draft class specification to Service Employees International Union on July 25th, and received no objections to the classification specification prior to this meeting. Today, Deputy Director of the San Joaquin General Hospital Clinical Laboratory, Cecilia Mui, is available remotely, should you have any questions.
Thank you. I do have a question, and I suspect the Deputy Director will want to respond to it. So it's in the very back, under physical, mental requirements. And towards the bottom, where it says environmental conditions, and it says frequent exposure to noise, dust, gas, smoke, fumes, chemicals, and biohazards. Now, I've been in a laboratory setting. I think, I think I know what's getting at here, but I'm also thinking there are flume hoods, fume hoods, there are safety protocols, there are things to prevent or reduce exposure. I just, I mean, do you really want to say that your employees are frequently exposed to chemicals and biohazards? It implies there's no safety protocols to me. So that's my question.
Well, good afternoon, everyone. This is Cecilia. Can you hear me?
We can quite well, thank you.
Okay. Yes, this clinical laboratory, as you mentioned, has a lot of PPEs and safety equipments to ensure all these things will not happen. But, I mean, this is just there, just for safety reasons, that the employee may be possibly exposed to chemicals, because they're handling chemicals, but most of these containers are enclosed. I mean, if there is any volatile solvents or reagents, it is placed under the phumhood. And employees, if they used chemicals that requires testing, we do provide annual testing to those chemicals to ensure that the staff is safe. So this is just there to ensure that everybody is aware that this is a work environment, some of the hazardous environments that they may be exposed to, but it is definitely within the safety guidelines of OSHA and all the regulatory agencies. Thank you.
Thank you, Cecilia. And that's exactly what I thought you were, that you were going to respond, and that makes sense to me. It just concerned me a little bit that it had been moved from occasional to frequent, and also, I think if I'd been writing it, but I wasn't, I might have said, may be exposed to all these things, but, so I bring that to your attention, but it's certainly up to you on it.
I will defer to HR to give recommendations on this, but I definitely do agree to your comments, and thank you very much for reading these, so in details. Thank you.
You're welcome. Does anyone else have any comments, and then we'll come back to this? Any opinion?
Well, Chair Lofstrom, you know me, I always have an opinion. I would say that I can appreciate the identification of that, and it is likely not something that Human Resources would likely use as a recruitment statement, right? We're not going to say, oh, until you get here, this is what's going to happen to you. But I do think, you know, part of what we try to do through the specs, through the duty statements, and the characteristics, and the definitions, as well as those physical and mental requirements, is make sure that there is a record of, and an understanding of what the environment may be. We don't want to end up having an employee, you know, go through the recruitment process, be selected, and then say, oh, I didn't realize this is what it is. And obviously, most people who have experience in a lab are well aware of the exposures that they likely are going to undertake, and have many years of training and experience. So I don't have a concern with the way it's listed, and if, through the process, the department and the class team identified it as needing an adjustment, I would, I would probably defer to their judgment on that.
Yeah, that's not surprising either. And so I've decided, yeah, I'm fine with it, but it did, it did alarm me initially, and I thought, oh, my goodness, it sounds like they don't have any safety protocols in place. But I've made my point, and for that, we can move on. So I'll entertain a motion to accept Project 25-001.
I can make a motion to approve that project, classification project 25-001, San Joaquin General Hospital.
Thank you. And do we hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Okay, and with that, the motion is passed. And Cecilia, just to be clear, so we passed it as written. There is no language change required or needed, but you heard my concern, so there's that. Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
And with that, we can move on to our final classification project of the day.
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Sylvia Aparicio, and I'll be presenting Classification Project 25-002. The request is for the commission to approve the amendments to Sterile Processing Technician 1 and 2. The sterile processing technicians within San Joaquin General Hospital handle all aspects of cleaning, decontaminating, preparing, and sterilizing surgical and procedure trace, and surgical case carts. Since 2017, Human Resources has conducted numerous selective recruitments at the one level, modifying the minimum qualifications to require the completion of an SJGH-approved externship, which includes hands-on training. With these requirements, or recruitments, SJGH has successfully hired candidates who are equipped to serve at entry, confirming the value of the required externship. Now, the department is requesting the amendments to the minimum qualifications for the sterile processing technician 1 be made permanent. In working with the department's subject matter experts, it was confirmed that a 240-hour extern was, or externship, excuse me, was common within the industry at the entry level, for an entry-level program. Including a minimum number of externship hours in the qualifications ensures candidates have actively participated in the training program and have gained necessary skills. Also, for both classifications, SJGH approval of the externships has been deleted, and Human Resources will maintain the responsibility of qualifying the training programs. The draft class specifications were provided, shared with SEIU on July 31st, and no objections or feedback were provided prior to this meeting.
Great, thank you. I myself had to look up externship. That was new for me. I had never heard of that one, and it was very interesting reading about it. I myself have no questions. Does anyone else, any of the other commissioners?
Yeah, just one.
Okay, go ahead.
So there's a substitution they mentioned about the certification from the national or from the California. So with the certification, so what are the basic qualification, the education they're looking for? Is there any basic education qualifications needed with the certification or not?
Are you looking at the one or the two?
The one, second one. Page two, degreasiety two.
Two, okay.
Because they mentioned substitution, right? With the certification from National Institute, or from the California State, is mentioned like a substitute, so we don't need any education qualification for this, or there is any basic need for the education?
Correct. So that would be in replacement of the education.
Okay, there is no education.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you for that.
Yeah.
Okay, unless there are any other questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve Classification Project CP25-002.
I'll make a motion to accept Classification Project CP25-002.
I can second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, and that motion has passed as well.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you all very much. That brings us to the end of our program for today. Our next civil service meeting will be October 8th, same time, right here. And with that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all. Thank you.[1582.72]